Anybody else's talk, but I, when I called and talked um about what you told me. Said like to know a little bit more about it. And that was it. So, haven't heard no more. But we will. Don't matter to me. You know, whatever comes out of his mouth comes out, so. Hey, you got something?
It looked really gay by the way.
We uh, we were going to um, to it, but our brand contractor had been following.
I think them horses may have.
You got anything, anything scheduled for?
We are, we are actually looking at, um, we have been in contact with three different rodeos coming up. Um, one of them, I know we can't do because it's like eighty-five hundred dollars. Just to bring, but they bring everything in. Uh, we, all we have to do is on the arena. I'm gonna bring everything in. And I think Tori said it was like eighty-five hundred dollars to do. To do that.
But a big rodeo, by itself.
That would be, that would be a big rodeo. Um, I think she was looking at, like, they've changed, one of them has changed their names. Used to be Ozark Family Rodeo. She's looked at them, um, Missouri Family Rodeo. She's talked to them and then the other one, they were out on the north that was place one, uh, that was Bowls and miracles. Um, but we are looking at those arabies talked to. Um, she was trying to get ahold of. The uh, lawn mower people again, that actually, that actually was a pretty good um, turnout there.
He's member that does that.
We've got two different um, companies that we, we've been on in contact with. So, Severn Mules is the one that was in earlier this year.
Yeah.
Um, and then I am actually getting ahold of some people to um, see about possibly doing teen penny.
Oh wow.
Uh, I've got a couple friends that do teen penny. They're driving four or five hours just to practice.
Wow.
Our thing with that one is, we can get a tire at cal, at least. Even just, because you turn ten of them out with numbers on them, um, and then you bring them back in. And stuff, um, but you pressure, we need to do thirty-four. Practice. It's, we are, if the practices actually turn out good, um, we're gonna get with one of the big companies that will actually try to make um, a big show with it, so, uh, with a, with a jackpot.
I was, uh, here a couple of weeks ago. I was at um, Carthage, Missouri. And they got an indoor arena down there with restaurant. And, and you can actually sit right there and eat and watch, and they were sorting that day.
Yeah.
And I'm sitting there going, holy cow. The next day was a rodeo and I thought crap, I could just stay down here and watch a rodeo and eat, you know?
Again, our biggest thing with that one is, we have to have a title. Um, that's, I've got one friend that he does it, um. He knows of the contractor.
Mm-hmm.
Um, one of the places that they would want to, the last couple of years have not, they decided not to do it anymore. But they had, that place actually had a contractor that actually travels, I think, throughout Missouri. Oklahoma, Kansas, and I think he said Arkansas. So, he's gonna get me that and um, see how much that might be. Um, our other thing is, is asking some cattle people around here. We're not looking at, we're looking to start out with just practicing. Um, and talk, and we're not looking at running the cattle down or anything like that. Um, so, you know, anybody that's got.
Feisty cattle.
Well, we don't want them too feisty. Don't want them to jump with that.
Yeah, that's true.
But, uh, if anybody knows anybody on, have a contact us.
Yep.
Either myself or Tori.
Alright. Well, sounds good. Can't wait till the first event you have. Let's break that fence in good, so. Alright, got anything else? Any questions for CAD or? Do what now? Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other citizen comments? Okay. Uh, it's an agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, the council meeting, you've all looked at it from August eleventh. Need a motion to approve that. If there's any changes, we need to. Need a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I looked at the bills, any?
I would like to explain of those bills.
Okay, please do so.
So this acts on enterprise, just this is the change department. I don't know if this is something that we necessarily need to do about, since we don't. I mean, we don't have a PD anymore. I don't know if that's something that I need to pass on Stacy, or if this is upkeep through the tasers we have.
Are they using our tasers?
They are using our tasers. We have the doutrations permanently. They've all been, uh, we have four.
They're all assigned to them.
All four of them, taken care of.
So then he, he should be, yeah, they should be taken care of, yeah.
Um, there is a single um booklet in there with sewer plant um, testing. Items that Von Decker is requesting that we get for E and R.
And he couldn't be here tonight. Um, he was planning on coming last night. It was my fault, guys. I had a funeral in Oklahoma I had go to, so. Thank you all for understanding that. So, um, but Don couldn't be here tonight. He wanted to kind of go over this stuff. Um, he did tell me, did he tell you? We do need to purchase this stuff, but maybe not at all at one time.
But, but we do need, but we, we do need it.
And, and what this is, uh, and I'm sure he's, he's, cause this is USA Blue Book here. He's found this one in this somewhere else. Um, I'm sure, I know Don pretty, pretty good. He's probably went and searched the best prices, so. But it's, it's uh, chemicals, it's uh, stuff that they do testing with at the wastewater lab.
And, and an evaporator.
And the equa, yeah.
All of the items we discussed at the last meeting.
Yeah.
Pretty much so. That, that, that's, this is it.
Yeah.
Um.
Cut down on our, our outsourced testing.
So what, what, what that's doing is he's coming in and doing the testing that we're a- actually or have been sending out and paying that monthly. So actually, it's gonna help us in the long run. It's gonna be better for us in the long.
Obviously, some of that stuff will have to be, you know, replaced because we use it, but.
Yeah, okay. What, what'd you say that was?
Thousand four twenty-eight.
Four, forever thing?
Yeah.
So, I, I.
Oh, I didn't. Hang on, I didn't realize.
Eighteen twenty-seven.
Okay, I didn't see them times two and times four on those.
Okay, what'd you say?
Eighteen twenty-seven thirty-four.
I just now seen that, right?
Okay, still not bad.
No.
So, um.
That's less than what a year costs us.
Well, it, it's four or five hundred dollars a month.
Yeah.
Yeah. Then our quarterlies are like, almost eight.
Eight hundred or seven something. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay.
Also, in there is the uh, lawn mower reel, not lawn mower, good word. So, watering reel for the soccer field.
And to be used other places.
Can be used other places, yeah. Um, and what, how long will it take to get that? Does anybody know?
I think relatively quick though.
Cause they hydro seeded today. O- okay, if you don't know, the soccer field, we went in conjunction with the school. We've got the top soil down now. They've all, thirty-six?
Forty-six.
Forty-six, wow. Wow. But anyway, it's pretty thick now. Um, and it's all been leveled off. And actually, they were doing it s- Saturday at railroad days and going, hey, a bad time to do. But anyway, it's all been leveled off, uh, hydro seeded today. And uh, we're gonna have to start putting water to it.
Tomorrow.
Probably pretty quick.
But gotta do it.
Gotta do it.
Lightly until it germinates. Once it germinates, that's when we need to realign, so we can really lay the water.
So.
Said one to two week turnaround is what she has.
One to two week?
Yeah, that's what I said.
Well, that's not bad.
More like ten days germination time.
So, so we can water it by hand?
Yeah, that's the plan right now.
Okay. So, I, I need a motion for that if we.
Move if we're gonna purchase that.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. So, when that's all said and done, we're gonna have the best soccer field around here.
So when they got them in, um, hydro seeding, they asked what an irrigation system would cost for that, if they had to come back, say in the spring or, you know, two years from now? He said eighteen to twenty thousand dollars.
Is that what crock, crockers cost at the boat?
Well, this, this, this water is not too bad. I mean, we got the water supply up there, it wouldn't be bad.
Well, and that's the only thing, Tori did test that. That reel needs between fifty-one and one oh one, something like that PSI. And Tori tested that, it's at seventy-five PSI.
Perfect.
So it should work really well.
Perfect. If not. Well, it's, it's on the, one of the biggest lines we got in town, so.
It should be good.
And then you got the road built.
It'll flush our lines, so.
Didn't you? You, you got the road built kind of in there a little bit.
Oh yeah, I forgot about that. We did build that road.
The road, coming off from seventeen.
Yeah.
And I have some burger up.
Yep, and I, I know we're off topic here, but I was actually at um, Plasque County Land and Title today. And was doing a closing and I said to them, hey, we need to get this easement done, so that we can get that ran into the city. So they're gonna start working on that.
Good.
We tore that barn and that shed down, and that's part of that house, though.
That goes with that house. I'm just gonna give the city an easement through that property as an entrance into the park there.
Gotcha.
Well, we put that pipe fence up with the cable and stuff too.
That really looks good. And we need, we, we need to look at doing the rest of that too. So.
Yeah.
Keep it, keeping the cars off of the fields.
I asked Bailey to get, to get a bid for that. I mean.
Yeah.
Did a good job on it.
Yeah, yeah.
No, that's like.
Get us a bid, see what it is.
Well, if we invest in this money and we wanna keep what it is.
Yeah. They want something up there tearing it up. That's the least thing we know.
Jessica, what, uh, men in the agenda for that sidewalk?
Um, we can throw that in the bills, I mean, if you want.
We can do a men's agenda for it.
For what? Oh, the sidewalk bills. Well, they've already told us though, actually.
That's the total. In the back sheet is the breakdown of all the concrete and material.
Actually, this is gonna come from them anyway, correct?
Are they paying all that?
That's what I understood.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, cause it's not gonna be, it was uh, and they, um, I was told today too, they got with.
Willard.
Willard, and they've signed their deal to have that all paid.
Good.
So, that should be done before very long. And like I said, this here, um, when I talked with Randall, um, he said, just let us know what it is.
Okay. So there you go, Jessica.
That's that stuff out there by the ambulance base in the way.
The driveways that we had to lower.
Yeah.
Sidewalk was too high and it was bottoming out there.
When I pulled out of yours, I started going the other way because.
Well, that's where the ambulance was going out.
Yeah, well, they had to come out the eleventh street and go out.
Yeah.
They done, I don't know, they done several hours worth of damage to one of their ambulances. It wasn't done right in the first place. Yeah, years ago when they done that, it was just. Why it was done that way, I don't know.
Did you, Jessica, I just thought of something. Did you pay that bill to Archer for design on that? Okay. So actually, there's a little more in that, Jen.
Good math, okay. Well, we'll just get it together. I'll get with Randall.
Yeah, you need to get those numbers together and get with Randall.
I'll get with Ra- Randall and, and then Chris will have a little bit on his too.
He, and he said he's willing to help our.
And I know he did say that, so. Uh, cause I mean, it was done from them, but it's use of our sidewalks, so.
Yeah.
Well, we'll split it up, so. Alright, um. That one's taken care of, then we just get the total and, uh, get with you and we'll get with Randall. Alright. Any other bills before we approve them? Are you good?
We'll have one coming from the fireworks with that um, three hundred dollar difference that we had. But I haven't got the input yet for it. It's within my spending limits.
I, yeah, I, we talked. Yeah, the Friday when it was nasty, rainy, I went down and talked to the shooter. He said, not a problem. But there would be like a three hundred dollar reset fee. Not a problem. And it was great fireworks. I, yeah.
That's one we've had in years.
Yeah, it was good, so.
I don't know that person. He took the picture over the horse ran a month ago and that was really sad.
So we hope to do more of that, so. Uh, anything else on the bills, guys? Just need to approve, so I need a motion.
Motion.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Alright. Going right along. Jessica says, railroad day review. What are we doing there?
Um, I was gonna have that all done for you, but I don't, so.
Well, I did one thing though.
Wait, well, before we get too hairy on this, um, we're gonna do like a community post to, you know, to get input from the community.
I, I'd like to be on there. What would they like to see next year? For one question.
Well, I'm just gonna say this, the carnival is terrible.
And it was.
Um.
He was supposed to bring them other stuff, wasn't he?
He was supposed to bring a lot more stuff than what he did.
And the photos that he provided us was not what was brought, so I want to be very clear on that. We, we did not anticipate it to be like that. Um, I did email a couple of other um, actual carnivals already, um, that go to Vienna and.
I told her, start on that Monday morning. She said, okay.
We've already reset today and I, I need to get the cat. I've contacted a rodeo. Um, and we've already discussed to do like, if we can get a bigger carnival that does like, you know, Plasque County Fair or Vienna or.
Oh, have a rodeo that night too. Wouldn't that be good, wouldn't it?
We would do bingo on Thursday.
Cat saying, oh no.
Well, the, but we've also discussed moving our base back up town. So there's a lot going in, and irons going into the fire, but, and I don't wanna get too deep in it, but we was thinking doing bingo Thursday, a rodeo Friday, or maybe even a lawn mower pool, cause I know that's a hot thing. Um, and then Friday night, uh, getting with Susan and Hank again for the fireworks, which I really like that, and then the street dance. Um.
Yeah, big booms with a bunch of animals may not be good.
No.
Really, there was a dog down there that's pretty jitty that night.
We had some issues with um, people um, not listening to, you know, Jose's barricades and they just thought that they did what they want. Um, but outside of that, we got a lot of positive feedback. Um, the parade was massive. Uh, Rockfish Mel called me like at ten after and was freaking out because the parking lot was completely full of there. And we've heard a lot of positive feedback about how big the parade was. Um.
Let's go.
All the vendors seemed pretty happy with how we had laid them out down there, so.
Got a, got a call from a elected official that was upset at me because I didn't invite him. And I'm like, I'm sorry, I will next year, if, if you're selling office.
No, my question.
I shouldn't have said that.
When you guys had the fireworks and, you know, where the parking lot is over there. Well, people started driving right beside this sewer, or what, what is that down there by the?
Bus station.
Yes. That little road, so you may, do you want them driving on that, or they were driving on it?
That's what it was forced.
That's what it's.
Frozen there.
No, 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 no. From the, a walking trail, the bridge in front of that, that little road.
Well, that night, fireworks night. There wasn't, what, what was wrong with that?
I think, I said, is that okay?
Yeah.
There was the guy setting the fireworks.
Yeah, there was nothing wrong with that. There was some other cars. I was sitting there too in the soccer field. There were some other cars driving. But they were just coming through the park, going through and going into the parking lot down. Some of them was coming out, coming out one.
Yeah.
It didn't affect anything. Um, cause I mean, yeah, there was a lot of people down there, but, I mean, nothing like the day of, you know, so.
I was just.
I didn't think it affected anything.
There, you know.
No, the boys cut that in there, so people couldn't run. Um, but whenever we get, whenever we do our um, budget review, I'll have all the numbers. I know we cleared a thousand dollars for bingo. We got twenty percent back off carnival and it was uh, one thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Um, the Miss Crocker and Baby Candidates brought in about seven, eight hundred bucks. Um, and the last review we did over our vendors, we were at four thousand, so we, we brought in some money with it.
That's good. That's good.
No, nobody's interested in doing Miss Crocker or that anymore.
Not, nothing like it was. Uh, you know, you, we had five or six, yeah.
We were kids and we were always.
Certainly, yeah, it's tough. Yeah, I don't know.
Do I, I was on that board for a couple of times. Richard Jerka and uh, Indie Girl.
Jamie?
Jay, yeah. And uh, we had like six or eight.
Yeah.
Girls applying, but you know, they gave them a percent of that money. And, I mean, we used to make a lot of money off the queens.
Yeah.
Yeah, and this time it was only what, two queens?
Yeah, we had pretty much begged both of them to do it.
Yeah.
And we, we started advertising. We started advertising in March or April for it. We got nothing, nothing, nothing. We went and approached a school, it was um, Shirley and Phil John.
This is just a wild idea.
Assembly and.
Could we do a Miss Crocker scholarship or something?
Yeah.
Uh, so much money to go into a scholarship, cause it's either a junior or senior, right? Or is it a senior?
We, for freshmen to uh, seniors.
Okay.
But they're gonna have to do something to get a scholarship. These girls did nothing.
Well, I, that, that's what I'm saying.
I had to do, we had nine girls do it when I did it. And we had to do like, it was forty or sixty hours community service. We had to write an essay. We had to find a business sponsor. We had to um, do a um, outfit and it, it was nuts.
What is that? Hey, hang on. What is that?
It stopped. Soon as you said that, it stopped.
You, you guys heard something too. I, I'm not going crazy, am I?
No.
Okay.
Sound like radio.
Yeah. I'll tell you, our board, we, we had a hard time with getting the queens. We had scholarship also in.
Okay, I didn't know.
There was still no interest.
It may be just something.
Social media's killed it.
Yeah. You guys back there.
Not them guys. These, these things right here and Snapchat, Facebook and everything else.
So maybe we just do it for little, little girls. I mean.
Do like a prince and princess.
Yeah, I mean, we had a bunch of people reach out to me and say, are you doing anything for the little kids? Cause we do that at Christmas, you know? And I had several interests in that, but I, we didn't do it.
Well, maybe we, we think about it. We get some input from everybody else and see what they wanna do.
We're gonna do a, you know, a, um, a post on it to get.
I, I think, I think that's what we need, we need their input, what they'd like to see. One, like I said, one question is, what would you like to see for next year? That's, that's mine.
Well, and I could tell my dad, this isn't the nineteenth century, this is.
What's that got to do with anything?
Oh, he said, well, they don't have wagons or horses, he said, my dad. Like, they used to. I said, that's back in the.
Billy Melvin didn't have his.
No.
No, she didn't even ride a horse in it.
We didn't have very many horses this year.
Used to, that was half the parade.
That was half the parade, yeah. Wagons and horses.
Yeah.
I mean, people remember the horse that got hit in the middle of town that year.
Oh.
So what's that?
Had to bring that up, didn't you?
I'm just saying, there were so many horses in town back then.
Back in the day, I mean, Dixon's thing was huge.
Yeah.
And they basically do what we do, so why is ours so, has gone back?
I will tell you, I about begged people to get involved. And getting people involved is about as hard as pulling somebody's teeth. They just don't get into that anymore, do they?
No, we had to go to Fort Sutterwood and have some of your stuff on us for our days.
Oh, and there we sit down there. Oh, I'll tell you later. I'll tell you later.
Well, I, I did, and I'll say this, I did have one complaint and she come up to me. Um, a- and it's, and it's legit and we probably need to look at it.
I think it is a good idea.
We do need, she, she said, and they were, was not from here. They were actually from another town, loved it. Uh, they come down for the parade, uh, come down for the celebration, and it's called Railroad Days. She said, there's nothing, her husband was a retired railroad worker. And she said, there's nothing for Rover. And I said, well, it's always been called Railroad Days. I tried to explain it to her. We, you know, we have had in the past. But I said, this year, we do not. And I said, we will look at that next year. So, I'll need help from you especially and others. How many railroad workers retired, still live around here? The ones that I know, I mean, like Mr. Campbell, that was the lead guy here, died a long time ago.
Yeah, my, my grandpa was, but he's been gone since I was.
That's what I'm saying, I mean.
Does it make a difference it not being in town and it being out to the park?
See, I think it does. Cause you know, we was kids, how.
Yes, they just were.
Yes, we did.
Yeah.
But you know how many people was in town?
A- and I have, that was a, that was a suggestion and that's why I did bring that to Jessica. It is beautiful.
And I guess, very proud of it, but it's, I don't know, it's just different out there. It's, there's no parking. Um, of course, there's not up here, but nine times out of ten, you can go in somebody's driveway. For years, we parked in.
And these streets back here are all full of cars when we did, when we've done that.
Both sides, yeah.
East side streets full all the way down.
Cause when I grew up with it being in town and knowing what it's like in town.
I don't.
Yeah. Well, that, that, I did mention that to Jessica, like, the night of. And um, it wa- it was mentioned to say.
Cars who hardly go down the highway for the people. So, you know.
So, something, I mean, that could be one of your questions on your survey.
Love to have that sound. I mean, I.
Well, I think it, especially the new businesses too, the coffee shop and others, it would help them all day long.
Well, and does Hank own that uh, empty lot right there behind the old Kentucky House? I mean, that could be cleaned up and maybe they could have their car show there or something off there.
There's, just really get to thinking about different places to have things. I mean, they can be spread out around, but.
Well, you know, even what was the health department, it's gonna be CO and C.
Yeah.
Maybe they let, yeah, there's a big.
Big lot there too.
And you can always kinda.
And it's walk in distance.
Yep. Or they can just, I don't like to get down there.
And that could be parking up there and we do shops, a- absolutely. Huh?
They don't hold the Olympics.
And that's, that's right.
We do it for Christmas. I don't know why we couldn't.
Uh, it's just something that we need to think about. It was suggested, so.
Yeah, your rodeo and that kind of stuff would be at the park. If you don't have your parking just. If you don't have your parking just of the vendors, then you have more room for parking for the.
For the events. And if they're scheduled events, people will know what time they are, everything's happening, so it's something to think about.
The people that drive through, that are out of town will stop.
We, we got that a lot before.
Then they would turn and could drive one block down.
Yeah.
And that's just.
And you know, I can remember when the. They're all about those or two, but.
Well, they had a couple, we could still.
Yes, yeah, it's always good, but.
Well, and it's very possible.
Right up there in the front, yes, I, I swear to God, they must have sold thousands of meals. You know, they did the parade and the soldiers up here would line up and there was a line for hours.
Well, they may.
They may now.
Yeah.
Oh, they won't do it on Labor, on.
No, they always want, they wanna do it, yeah, on Labor Day.
So, and there's other things we possibly we could do. Just an idea, get your, get everybody's brains working and let's get the comments going, let's, I mean. Yes, there's gonna be negative comments, we know that. You're not gonna please everybody, but. We, let's see what we can do, see what we come up.
The vendors like you have this year. The vendors at least, um, with an event in the arena or anything like that. I would put those food vendors out on Park Street.
Oh, yeah, we would have put them up again in there.
I think that would be better of that, if you're gonna have, I would put maybe one or two in there. But not all of them around, that went around.
Yeah.
No, not if we're gonna host something.
Something right there, yeah. All right.
But we'll get that post on there and get community input, so.
That'd be great, we need to, is that it on that?
I, I would just say, I think you guys internally need to do an AAR.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, please, yeah.
We, I've got a list of things that we would.
I think just kinda needed to sit down and go over a few things and see what, there's stuff we can do better for next year.
People really want to, I mean, put out, figure out, we're meeting, taking ideas. For next year's to maybe a better little event than every year strive for improvement, something to do.
Yep. Yep, I think so. Brian, you got anything else on that?
No.
All right. Let's uh, set a date for uh, hearing, what hearing is this gonna be on?
I thought it had to be thirty day notification.
No, I can post it publicly, Sunday's for add more.
Explain what this is.
Your tax levy.
And we can't do nothing about it, it's already set by the state.
And that's why I don't understand why we have to.
Do it on a Wednesday.
What, what'd you say? Okay, I won't be here, but if you want, no.
Uh, we can do it the week after that.
That is the sub, the week of the seventeenth.
No, no, he's going.
Today's the, today's the ninth, I'm gone from Sunday all the way through next week.
I was still in the first week of September.
Twenty-fourth. I can possibly do it that day, I would move things around, what, when do you, wh- when do you wanna do it? What time do you wanna do it? Depends on. Five thirty. Uh, okay.
Twenty-fourth?
I can make that happen, twenty-fourth. And it won't take, but. We have to explain what it is and setting the tax and done. I mean, we're not setting the tax, they are.
Is that the date then?
September twenty-fourth at five thirty.
Okay.
Okay, five thirty. All right, hang on, I'm, I'm right, I can't do two things.
You can't choose to go.
Ah, fall down. Okay, got it. Um, a little bit on my report, um. The wastewater plants, we need to get the. The, uh, the, the, the builder, um.
The bid?
Yeah, we need to get that going, we need to get with DA Davis, uh, we need to set, um. Exactly what we are, have to do down there on the first phase and uh, come up with the. Kinda got a bid, but we need to get the bid.
We need to get the actual bid, okay.
So, we need to move on the wastewater deal, gotta get that going pretty quick.
So, it hasn't started yet?
No, it hadn't started yet, everything, everything's went in phases now. Um, the bid for the whole thing come in way over, we, we had it for like four million. And it come in for like over seven million, so we're gonna do it in phases. So, the first phase is what we re- what we gotta do with DNR.
Work compliance.
Uh, to get in, to get. Get ourselves back where we need to be, um.
So, are we gonna get that grant for the two million?
Well, we had the grant for the two million, um, and we had our loan and everything. When the bids come in for seven million, that kinda throwed all of that out. So, we either had to redo all the paperwork and we had like two days to do it.
Yep, and we legally couldn't.
We, we couldn't get all the bids and everything, so what we've done, we're gonna do it in phases. And we've got, like I said, DA Davis is behind, is the, the. Lender and grantee that's doing it, so we're gonna get that pretty much. We need to get on the ball with that, so, because he called me this morning and said, where are we at? And I said, I'll get it to you in a week. So, I'm telling you, we're gonna get it to him in a week, so. Um, we get that stuff done, uh, we can get to moving on that pretty quick. It's the same, um, the same UV as what they put in Richland. So, that's why, one reason why I've got Dawn down here, Dawn's gonna oversee.
Yeah.
All of that putting. Price, the price stuff, um, everybody was saying the tariffs, but I don't know if it was the tariffs. Uh, with, with the pumps and the motors and, you know, the, the rotors. We can buy the rotors from a company, where they had it at six hundred and thirteen thousand, we can get them for thirty thousand apiece. Just buying them, not going through this, so actually saving some money that way. So, it's just things like that, that you, you know, when they throw it into a big government bid. Prices go up, now I don't know why it was doubled, but. And the engineers sat here and about in tears and, I didn't know, I didn't know, and I said, well. You've gotta be better on what you're, what you were, so we kinda got into it.
Because I was kinda excited that night when you spoke, you know, gonna get your grant.
Yep, yep. So, this is where we're at, it's gonna get done in phases, so we can't. And we won't be bankrupt trying to do it, so. So, that's where we're at and I hope it starts in the next couple of weeks. So, we gotta get that bid going.
Remember, submittals is a twenty-two week process.
Um, we are gonna look at, um, I may be throwing this at you. But you all know where we're at, uh, we're gonna start looking at. Um, engineering report or an engineer study on the Old Town Water Lines, we're gonna start that pretty quick.
So, I was gonna ask that, have you started any of them at all?
Not yet.
Just when they, you need.
So, so it's kinda the same thing as the wastewater, we gotta get an engineering study done and we can get that with a grant too. So, we get an engineering study done on the water lines that. Can we afford to do them all? No, but we're gonna afford to do. The old part of town, the nineteen thirty-nine, nineteen forty-one lines that gotta be replaced. Um, we put a, almost a clamp on a clamp over there by the county shed the other day. Um, the old clamp was here and we had put one right next to it. But we had to dig down twelve feet because it was that deep going under a rubber trap.
Same thing down there in front of the post office.
Same thing for the post, so. We have no other choice, so we're, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna have to get the engineer study done. There's a grant to do that, we'll get that done, and then, um. Figure out a way which way we're gonna go, either. UFDA or USRF.
End up being SRF.
I, I would just, you know, one way or the other, we'll see. That's a lot of paperwork either way we go, so. Okay, sorry, I jumped the game. But anyway, we're gonna get started on that and we're gonna get moving on that pretty quick, so. I mean, pretty quick. I've been in these holes, I know, uh, you have too, you've seen them.
Denise just made a point, she said, that's why we're gonna leave the streets the way they are.
Kind of right now, and as we replace, we replace the old cast iron line. We replace the streets at the same time.
Yeah.
So, one street, let's, let's take ten street right here. We may replace it all the way down to Walk Wall.
Mm-hmm.
And we might repave all of that down to Walk Waller. Then the next, after that, is from there on down and repave it, it's, you know, as we go. So, but we gotta get rid, there's no. This street right out here was one proof, when we blacktopped it. They run the vibrator down to roll the blacktop down and two days later, we digging it up because we had a water, as the old line busted. So, can't keep doing that. You'll never have a good street, so. Earthquake, there you go. Very well could be. I know there's others I'm forgetting on my report, but I will, if I think about it from now on then, I'll mention some, so. All right, Sheriff's Department, do you have anything, Pam? Okay. Okay, Code Enforcer, how about you there? Okay.
I still have seventeen properties, uh, currently, I'm looking at a couple of them to grant at. If you have some good news, one of our worst properties is now off my list, on Road School Street. They had finally gotten it to the floor, I just drive by occasionally, make sure the grass is good now. Uh, we do have one property that, did you address? Okay, I have one property that last, late last May, early June, I red tagged the property. Good photograph of the property, uh, I red tagged it for overgrowth and for an abandoned, unlicensed, non-working vehicle on the property. Clearly in new, on the street. Uh, didn't hear anything back, saw no change. In July, I sent them a letter, a formal letter to the property owner stating this needs to be taken care of. Hadn't heard anything back from them, hadn't heard anything back, two weeks ago, I red tagged the property yet. And again, I've not heard anything back. The property owner, I don't, I had, I said, I've not heard anything from them or anything like this, this is a relatively small. Property or, or small issue to be fixed. I'm not a hundred percent sure how to word this, but I think this would be a prime example of something that we take care of. To go with everybody else and we're serious about getting appropriate compliance, and dealing with them for like five months now. Four months, something like that. No feedback at all from the owner, zero feedback from the owner, no contact at all. Um, as a matter of fact, I gave him a, gave the property owner a notice about another property they own. And within two weeks, that property was cleaned up, so I know he's getting, I know, getting the notices. But absolutely zero feedback, I've tried multiple times to make contact with the residents. Of the property, either they don't wanna answer the door or they're just never there, and I've, I've tried at various times of the day.
So, we get a hold of Mark and see the proper channels to go through and start the channels. Unless you guys got something else?
That's where I was kinda leading you.
Well, don't we have somebody? Don't we have somebody hired to do that or wanna do that or something?
Usually it would be, uh, my understanding for the ordinance, it would be the city workers would take, we would probably.
He's stoned by the mediator.
The, the, yeah, the, yeah, but.
According to the ordinance, but you can go either way.
Yeah, we can go either way with it, it doesn't have to just be through a, a hearing officer.
Okay.
Even if they send a letter.
I'm sorry?
Even if the attorney gets sends a letter.
They, he's already been sent one, he's already been sent one.
No.
By me.
But you're not an attorney.
Yeah, I think that if it gets sent, if we get an attorney.
Okay.
Okay.
Trying to figure out which one it was.
Well, I, I, I. Um, let's just check with Mark, see which, do, what do we need to do first? Do step one and do it the right way and go with it.
Well, I wanted them to present it to you, see what you guys wanna do.
Well, they're not, if they're not, I'm sorry, there's no use having the ordinance if we're not gonna do anything with it.
If they have multiple properties and they're working on one.
I'm sorry?
Why, yeah.
If they, if they got multiple properties and they're working on one, you know we're getting the notice for the other one, why aren't they fixing that one too?
Hang on a little bit.
We have another property order, who has a very large project on their hands. That individual contacts me at least flights a month.
Correct.
Letting me know what's going on, currently they're, they're, they're doing extra work, they're working extra hours. So that they can afford to move, they're planning, he's already, they've already got a plan in place to, to have the property cleared. He's hoping by the end of the year.
But you are making contact with several of the others.
Mm-hmm.
And they are contacting you.
This, this is one, this is one of two that are absolutely refusing to contact me at all.
Get with Mark.
Move it on, yeah.
It was already brought up about the railroad days, people not paying attention or not. Showing or any respect towards barricades, we've seen VMA come out here from what I understand for several years now.
Yeah.
To, to, to block our roads, wash and everything, uh, they reported to me that there were at least one. I got pictures for, but I'm sure there was more than one, people that did totally disregarded them.
And they're just volunteers, helped us for years.
Yes, they have, uh, but the only thing that they've been using is uh, themselves.
Yeah.
So, when we were trying to barricade the uh, Park Street for. For the rodeo day event, we were using cones and, and signs, uh, apparently there was an issue with somebody doing that too. Um, I'd like to know if we could purchase some actual barricades, I've got some, I've got a couple examples here, I got one that I really like. Uh, to actually purchase some barricades, so we can put them up, uh, eight foot barricades. They're A-frame barricades, basically sawhorse barricades, um, so we can actually put them up. They completely block the road, so that even if they wanna disregard everything else, they're gonna have to drive through those possibly damaging their own vehicles. They're plastic, they're really not gonna do a lot of damage, but they're more intimidated.
Yeah.
Um, couple prices I've got, we're looking at between two thousand and twenty-five hundred dollars. For either twelve or twenty-five, eight foot barricades, we need probably cost, well, we get a little price, we'd get twenty-five as opposed to twenty-four. But we had twelve across streets that needed to be barricaded off. This last, because of the length of the parade, uh, that's why I said twenty-four, eight foot would. Do about half the road, two eight foot barricades would cover the road well.
Any comment?
I would just say the funds that was made off of the celebration should be used to improve it. And that would be an improvement.
Right.
A much needed improvement.
And you'd probably find them cheaper, you'd probably use ones and so on, but.
Or did you, did you get them from?
This particular, the one that I like came from, uh. Traffic Systems dot com. They actually, they're traffic safety.
One of our street vendors may have them at a cheaper price too. So let's, let's kind of, let's get with Cory and, and. Cormain or one of them we buy signs from and check and see if it's something that. That he can use, I mean. So.
Well, he could. When he sets out, it's water leaks or we're working on roads.
Yeah, we can use them on multi-function.
But, but the big barricades is what you're talking about, uh, and I think we need them sometimes, yeah, yeah. Yeah, a- and I know he can order that through some of his suppliers.
Yeah.
And we can, like I said, we could probably get them a little cheaper.
Another thing I was checking.
We'll check. We'll check, I know we need them, yeah.
I was looking, uh, and I asked Jessica about it. We don't have an ordinance in reference to barricaded streets or anything like that. Um, there's actually nothing in RSMO about barricading streets except for buildings. Um. Should I write something up and let you take a look at it?
What the other towns are, I, I know we just, St. Roberts, Waynesville, all of us just, at any time, we block them off as we need to.
And I checked with Lieutenant Cheryl and she said it's absolutely perfectly normal, I'm worried, I'm not worried about us actually blocking them off, I'm more worried about a consequence for those who decide not to adhere to it.
Yeah, probably need to look at that. See, see if one of them. I, I don't care, Waynesville, St. Roberts, Wesseling, I don't care, see if one of them's got an ordinance on the books already.
Okay. Yeah, Waynesville's got all their works and all, I can take a look at that.
I mean, if they've already got something, I mean. I, I, yeah. I don't know, we've just always blocked everything off, I mean.
And like, like you said, I'm not worried about, that, that's, that's not the issue, I'm worried, worried about the con- consequence with.
Late.
Regarding.
Yeah, okay.
As a matter of fact, what I understand, the one incident up at the park. Where the individual drove through at, it was right into the railroad days, not into the vendor area, but into the area we had for the, the car show. He decided to drive on down Park to Rose.
Yeah, there's kids running and.
And, and we had it all blocked off.
Yeah, and it was, it was wild.
One of the deputy's cars was set.
Yeah, I, I think this happened.
Just before he showed up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh.
It was literally like moments before he showed up. Yeah.
Didn't he get hit by a mirror or something or?
He, well, okay, uh. One of the vendors was coming in to pick up their vehicle. And he didn't identify himself as a vendor, he didn't have a handicap tag. The deputy said stop and the guy just basically said, to heck with you, and kept going forward, then he put his hand up, the mirror hit his hand. And, uh, there was no injury to the deputy, no damage to the vehicle, it was more of a disrespect thing than anything else, the guy never identified himself as a vendor. Until after I sent this runner this truck and we both were having words with him.
Ah, boy.
Yeah, that was the individual that was here.
And he will not be found back.
So.
I hope you don't do stuff like that, I'm sorry, I don't care either.
I mean, it was just.
Only what that gentleman say on the.
I'm a vendor picking up something.
Yeah, we have to say this other vendor.
You should tell everybody that's doing, that's a true dance, but cool.
Well, we won't get into that.
Yeah.
Okay.
It was among his, him and his back, but. No, no, nothing to our patrons, but.
I wasn't aware of anything because I was rolling around watching.
It was right, right before everything ended, the band was already tapping.
Oh. You're always gonna have some. I, I, and that's why them people are there, so. You're always gonna have some, that's why them people are. Um, anything else on your list that you need to go over? No. Let's. Get with Mark, get, get his first step on how to proceed and proceed through.
Okay.
You're reworking that dog control thing and.
I'm just trying to. Keep it the way it is, but take a lot of the legal speak out, bring it down with everybody else's language. Um. Yeah, that's. Um, did, did you ever talk to the ATV rewrite?
I don't have, we do.
Okay, okay.
You got any questions for? Mr. Hosea?
No.
Hosea.
You just come here, I'll ask.
Oh my God.
No, that's, yeah, that's a, that's an ongoing thing. It's, uh. Some days I can, some days I can't.
Okay, gotcha.
One day I can.
Okay, thank you, sir. Ms. Jessica?
I'm back. Um, I'm gonna start with the water, um, so I've been talking with Lauren Grassley with DNR, basically as Jim said, that we have to. Get a engineering study done of our water system before we can apply for any type of grants. If we go a grant, if we apply for a grant. For the grant to pay for the engineer studies. That has a window to be completed between eighteen months to two years. I am going to request that we pull funds from somewhere and the city pay outright for the engineering so we can. Get two years ahead of the game, basically. Because if we can have an engineer study, which we spoke with an engineer firm out of Springfield. She thought she could have the engineer study done within, what was it, a hundred and ninety days or something like that? And then. Ideally, if we can have that done and our paperwork done, then we can apply for the cert funds by March one of twenty twenty-six.
That's when they're due is March.
Yes, but we have to have that engineer study done.
Yeah.
If we don't, then, I mean, we're gonna be pushed off.
A year.
And how much was it?
It's about thirty thousand dollars.
For any engineer?
For the engineer study.
Yeah, for the engineer study. But I think we would be money ahead and take it, I mean, just to take the hit and pay for it. Yeah, it is a necessity, it's not something we can continue to set on the. Um.
It's gotta be done.
Yes.
I mean. The lines have, have.
We have to study on, you know, all of our lines, our water towers, e- everything. So it's not just the, you know, the lines that need fixed, it's our whole water system.
So, and this, this is, it's hardly, is, that the increase in the water bills? I mean, ours is basically a thousand dollars a month.
That'll pay for it.
If that's, if we have that money.
It, it's a, that's why I said, that's, that's why I was trying to explain back then. We had the water rates up, we can do this stuff. Now we can apply for the grants, we won't have to go through all the rate studies and stuff now, because they all know, just like DA Davidson on this other, they all know where our rates are. The rates are right there, right where they need to be, and we don't have to do all that other paperwork.
It just helps expedite the process.
So, so we're there, they won't go up anymore. So. That's where, that's where they said it needed to be on an X amount of dollars, so.
Was that twenty-seven five?
That's why we just did it all at one time, I mean, I know it was a shocker.
It was a shocker and I, and, and, but now we don't have. Don't have to mess with it anymore.
Yeah, because mine's quite high for two people.
Mine's high too.
Mom's is high and I never use them to look.
So you got a minimum bill?
Yeah, I get a minimum bill, seventy-seven dollars.
Seventeen.
Minimum bill.
For water and sewer.
Water sewer and the trash is on there too, and you probably, you took it off?
Yeah, because mom and dad never did pay for trash.
Yeah. Yeah.
But they had a dumpster out there where I live. They got grandfathered in.
Okay.
And I never use any, eventually we will, we start paying more.
Cleaning it up, yeah. We'll double check on that too and make sure it's still just the minimum, so, should be a thousand dollar, or a thousand dollar.
And that, and that's getting, if we paid up for them, that would be getting a, a little bit cheaper cost. Than what we would, you know, through a grant.
Yeah.
Granted, the grants would be eighty-twenty, we have some.
Twenty, twenty-seven something, I think that's what.
They're gonna cut us a deal. Yeah, twenty-seven, seven fifty is what the, what the estimated cost would be. And she did say if they, you know, didn't do something, that we would get those funds back, you know? Um. So, and I also talked to USDA with Ashley, um, she come down and done the Skid steer review and civil rights report. Um, that I've been working on, and she said that that's obviously a lane that you take, but again, that's, that's more financing on our part.
It, it's paperwork, they, and, and I did have her boss contact me the other day and ask me. Where we're at. If they can be, any assistance, they would help us, now, as USDA, they got grants and loans both. And if you, it's same way with SRF. You do one, you have to do the other, so.
Same thing we done on the Skid steer.
Same thing we done on Skid steer. And it's usually, I think, what, seventy-five, twenty-five or something?
I think it was sixty, forty on the Skid steer.
Maybe it was. It's.
But I think it varies depending on what the.
What it is in the amount of the deal. So, I, I do know they're setting in the background going, we will help you.
Yeah.
So, and I'm not afraid of USDA.
No, Ashley's a great to work with.
That, a lot better. Yeah.
I'll say it, it's a lot better than DNR, and I'm scared to death to get involved in DNR again, because there's a nightmare we did with the wastewater, but.
It, it's gotta happen, so, okay. Um.
So isn't that the reason, reason the water race was so we could do this stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Yep.
A solution.
It's, it is, and that's, that's, I sat here and I, you know, and you were here that night, I said, this is why we have to do it. We don't have to mess with it later on down the road, so.
But I just want to be very clear, even if we, we get the engineer study. We, you know, we get that completed, we get everything in and applied by March one, we're not gonna know if we get that.
The SRF.
Yeah, until the fall, and then, you know.
Fall of twenty-six, instead of if we file for a grant to get this engineer study, we'll be finding out in the fall of twenty twenty-eight.
Yes, and then we gotta go through the whole process of, you know.
Then you're eighteen months out, you, you're looking at three years trying to get something done here, and we could speed up in a year and a half.
Yeah. It's not a overnight fix, but if we could outright pay for that engineer study, it would put us leaps and bounds ahead of where we need to be.
And, and that's what. That's part of what this.
Yeah.
Was for.
Yeah.
So, a- and. We're gonna have to get moving on, guys, we, we can't, we can't drag our feet like that last twenty years.
I understand the people why we did that.
Well, and this is why.
Yeah.
So wastewater project will be starting here fairly quick. Then if we can get this moving and we can get going on this and replacing some of the. Streets afterwards, that's gonna be a big improvement.
Well, and the funds we're setting aside now for the streets too, for long-term planning.
I mean, it can't happen overnight, but we need to make it happen, so.
I wish we could snap our fingers and stick with it.
I was a witch.
Maybe you're just a witch without powers.
So, when was the? When was the budget review that we were gonna do that?
October sixth.
October sixth, yeah.
So.
We should be able to know then.
Three weeks.
Whether we can do that or not.
I, I think, I think we can, but we prob, I, I want to do that review just to make sure.
Yeah, but I'm just.
I don't want to rob Peter to pay Paul.
No, 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 but it's on coming down timeline and I think that's the route we need to.
Then, okay. I guess, you know, this time. Of robbing Peter to pay Paul, and that's where we're at this day, we don't have money to do what we need to do, so. Okay, I said my two cents.
Uh, I did post on our Facebook page about the LWCF grant, um, the park. Um, it's, it's the same type of grant that the park wore, um, the flag war for the walking trail. Um, our. Our main goal would be playground equipment, I mean, that's. It's not okay down there and it, it needs updated.
I looked at it the other night when I was down there and it's, it, it's cracking, it's pretty bad.
It is, the boys took that tube out, you know, and it's just, and it was, how old were we when y'all got it?
Was it used?
We like to zone that off, so we'll put that together, uh. Well, it was from Luge, wasn't it, Waynesville Railroad?
Yeah, yeah.
Was that Waynesville? I thought, I thought it was.
When the trail though, or something, it's.
But.
Been there for fifteen.
Quite, quite.
Ten to fifteen years.
Yeah.
Getting close to fifteen years, my grand.
So the lifespan has come and gone.
He had it for ten to fifteen years and then I.
Or what?
I mean, it's definitely served its life.
It, it's, it's done us good.
All the nuts and screws and bolts was in little lousy bags.
Sure.
We had to sort them.
So, so you put it together, right?
No, I, no. We had the soldiers come down.
I was gonna say, would you take it apart?
No. No, no.
Um. O- okay, well, that won't interfere with the, the walking track, that, this is totally separate, same thing, but totally separate.
Totally separate grant, which we, I, uh, we sat down with MRPC because, you know, we do pay the dues every year and, uh. Kelly's gonna help us with that, we've already started submitting, and we had to post that on our Facebook to do like basically a community forum to get feedback on, you know, what we want. Um, what the community would like to see happen in the park. Um.
I think the playground equipment is a good idea.
I'm still having things posted on there that was good ideas, but I think.
I always wanted volleyball, you know?
It's mostly the young, what is down, like, you want.
Yeah.
She tried to take volleyball. When I was on the board before, we talked about that several times. But we didn't know how, hey, we're leaving the heads, maybe they'll take it down, but it up. And it's kind of a problem with basketball, you can just leave it out here.
Well, basketball. I spoke with a school. To possibly do, um, a couple of tournaments. Um, through the community to do a fundraiser for the basketball court. Um, Ashley recommended that we wait until after basketball season, because, you know, Misha rules and all of that. Um, but I've talked to quite a few community members and they're on board with it. Um, and maybe doing it, um, a basketball court and a pickleball court there on the side. It's in the works, don't look at it.
I've seen pickleball, I just stay in one spot.
How many got questions?
Yeah.
It's kind of like.
Kind of like tennis.
Oh, Lord, we're his ways.
Our pool is closed for the season, uh, the last Sunday. Um. We need to discuss some upkeep on that as well, um. I don't know if you want to do that tonight or some other time, but we need, we need to talk about some of that.
Is winterization been done to it, even though it's closed?
Um, not yet, um, blonde is coming, I believe it's the end of this week or beginning of next week to close it down.
Yeah.
Um.
We talked. Did we have a dog swim? Everybody else is having a dog swim.
Well, I, I said, no, it's none of my business, I guess, but we had that one time, he's, I keep looking at it.
Oh. Okay, forget that.
We won't believe all the dogs here. I mean, it was disgusting.
We, we discussed with that blonde pool to see about a cover, if that would help us out.
Well, the, we did, and I talked to Jim about that this weekend.
Yep.
We're gonna have to replace that concrete on the top of it, there's no ifs, ands or buts about it, it's falling apart, it's falling into the pool, it's turning on. All the places it's been dug up and what have you, and at that point, if we replace it, then we can have him come out and scan and he can get us a.
He can laser it.
I've been down there digging loads.
He's designed for the pool.
I used to jackhole. When we was digging it up. Me and Kitty was on our bell, he's digging that stuff out there.
Uh, sleeve that one line that's, you know, on the bottom.
That's what we need to get done first.
So.
That will get rid of the water hole out front. And then we need to look at everything else on that. Yeah.
So. Other than that, we should have our audit back by the end of this month, beginning of next month. Um, and I don't know if I've three kinds on.
Deckers do good, they're their auditors, they're, they're the ones that used to do it years ago.
Yes.
So. Is there, can we publish that audit when it comes back?
Why not?
Yeah, it's public.
Reason why I bring that up.
Yeah.
Elephant in the room, there's, there's several people that say, oh, the city needs to be audited, they're crooked, they're doing this, they're doing that.
Put it out.
We do internal audits. We do internal audits.
Put it out there.
Let's put it out there for these folks to see.
Can, can you, I know it's gonna be thick, because when we get booked, it's usually pretty thick. So, is, can they? Can Deckard do good, I mean, can they make it electronic?
An executive summary of it?
Where, where it's view only?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they'll send me a draft of it, a draft of it electronically.
Then they can, they can have it electronically, then if they wanna go through it, I don't care.
Yep, we could hang it in the lobby out there, people.
I mean, if they want copies of it and someone to sit and read it, they could do that too. Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
I, I talked to the, one of the people that was saying that, and I told him, I said, if you wonder where the money is, you wanna go up and ask them.
I've told, I've told a thousand people that, you know, how many people come in here?
None, none, none. They just want to have on Facebook.
We're, we're going, it, when it's done, it's gonna be, it'll be out there, and they can get copies of it, they could do if Darryl and the other gentleman wanna put it on them, their stuff, they can do it too.
And you put it on the website?
On our, in our website, yeah, no, you can put a link to it. Just have the link and they can just go on the webpage and click it and go.
I think the problem is, is the average citizen doesn't understand what it will cost the city if they force them on it.
Yeah. Then they're done that.
They're done every year. So.
So it's that, it will be there, it'll be available to anybody who wants to see it. Jessica?
Educated.
That's right.
Educated, tell them how much it's going to cost them.
Yeah. Well.
City of Dixon did one a couple of years ago, I believe it was about eighty thousand dollars.
We did one years ago and it was sixty eight thousand, I remember.
What did they find wrong? A couple of things were.
Minor things.
Yes.
Yeah.
Who doesn't do that?
Who, who, um, something was put in the wrong place and it needed to be put over here, and there needed to be a best I can remind was, needed a new line item or something.
Well, at the end of the year, obviously, you didn't rent a new video, you know?
So we'll put it out there, educate, if they got any questions when it's done, here it is. And usually we'll have Deckard do good here at a meeting, they'll present it with us, they'll go over it with us. Uh, any findings or anything, any recommendations they, it'll all be in a public meeting just like this, so.
To Marshall, maybe?
Marshall was, done it before.
Yeah, they, it's Deckard and D good.
D good, I said do good, but it's. So I would call.
We'll start with a D.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if I told you at this last meeting or not, but I did get those, um, payment, um, areas on our court money so that people can pay their other fees with us online or, you know, in the office now, so that, that's.
Well, I, I seen Tracy at the conference two weeks ago from court money, and I said, look, and she said, I already got it, okay. So, it just makes it a whole lot easier.
It does.
People these, I mean, yes, we still have come to come in and write a check, but it's easier for people to set it home, pay their bills, do their stuff right there.
Yeah.
So.
And honestly.
And we gotta, as Denise says, we gotta get to twenty first century. All right, what else you got, young lady?
I think that's it.
Any questions for her? Any question?
You have to read this. I need to read that, I'm gonna let Jim explain that to you guys.
What do you say, what?
That resolution.
Okay, yeah, this is, um, this is on the ammonia. The, uh, EPA set new ammonia limits for every water system in the United States, or wastewater system.
Okay.
In the United States.
Not water.
Not water, wastewater. So Missouri, DNR, and EPA's come back and said, set our limits, set every system's limits, and some is a little different than our, you know? Um, so what we need to do is to set this and ask for variance, but I've already went through, sat down with Mary, Mary is the ammonia limit guru. Um, and we're only in the summer months, like two months, that we reach or exceed the limit. Some systems are year round. So we're not in that bad a shape. Um, so I talked already with, um, a vendor of mine that handles pneumonia, oh, ammonia, oh, God, ammonia. And, um, we kinda done experiments, uh, probably three years ago.
Something like that.
Um, to see if it would work. DNR said it wouldn't work, they were here too, they knew what was going on, and guess what?
It worked.
It worked. So, and now everybody's wanting to do it, so, uh, those two months out of the year, usually June, July, that everybody's ammonia level is high, um, we can feed these bugs. So we can meet our ammonia. So, but we wanna go ahead and pass this.
Feed the bugs.
Oh, I thought you said feeding bugs.
Feed the bugs.
B U G S.
Good bugs? Bad bugs.
Okay.
Um, but anyway, um, pass this, this is just asking DNR, and we, we may not even use this, but I wanna go ahead and pass it anyway. Uh, just to ask for a variance, that way if something does happen, we've got it. So, and that's, Mary said, go ahead and get it, pass it, that way we may not ever use it, but we would have it in DNR's.
So we're gonna see a moment you come, just the sewage?
Yep.
You know why we smell it every once in a while in the summertime? Pretty strong around town.
So, what kind of voluntary compliance is this?
This, this is not a voluntary.
This, this came from DNR?
This, this is come from Barrett, but yes, come from DNR.
You, you see my.
I, I do, I do, I do, and I, I, I'm gonna tell you, I'm not gonna sign this if I knew it was an AOC. If we had limits that we, we're gonna meet our limits, um, actually, I've got I've got Mary, she couldn't do it this, yesterday. Um, but I've got Mary coming down, she's gonna sit down with y'all, actually at a meeting, and go over what this is and explain it from point A to point B, why this is, now. Uh, part of the wastewater phases is the INI. The INI goes into this ammonia problem, so we fix some of the INI, we fix some of this problem, we fix the most.
Like the UV, the UV, whatever we gotta have?
The UV is the, it's dis, that's disinfection.
That's the other end of it.
So what's happening in those two months that is higher than in the ten months?
Hot in the earth.
Hot ten thirty.
Yeah. Just like, just like ponds turning over, or lakes turning over and you smell them, same thing here. Then with going through the plant and going through all the process, it doesn't take ammonia out, and it, and you, and you exceed an MCL going out. See, right now, we don't have disinfection, disinfection won't fix this, but it goes on out to the creek then. So a higher ammonia limit goes out to the creek, and that's what, in the two months, and, and I looked at ours, I looked at our numbers, there's two months, June and, June and July, that were right there, and like July, we exceed. The rest of them are all, August is close and September starts falling back off, so in the wintertime, we don't have an issue. So.
So.
So if you wanna look at this, we can table this, we don't have to pass it right now, I would say, cause you haven't seen it, look at it, then we'll get Mary down here to explain it.
I like that.
And then, because we can wait on, I'm telling, we can wait on this.
Okay.
But if she's down here and explaining to everybody, she can do a better job than I.
She's the one that was down here before?
Yes.
Yep.
The wastewater guru, that's, that's her.
So, in saying that, not in, I'm not trying to insult your intelligence by no means, but.
You don't have to work very hard on it.
This is, this is giving you authorization to act on behalf of the city.
Yeah.
And you understand why I'm hesitant about this.
I do, I do.
Um, would you consult with Don before returning, sending anything over to DNR?
And, yes, and, and that's why I say, when, cause Don's gonna have to go through the same thing at his plant. So, when he's down here, he's gonna be working and doing the same thing here, that's why I, there's sister plants anyway, they were built the same year.
Yeah.
They look almost identical, and if we have that person do the UV and everything else, then our plants, he can come down and, and he's just like, he's at home, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Well, and I trust his counsel on this stuff too.
Yeah.
Um, just being honest, I don't trust DNR.
I, I, and I agree, let's, let's, let's table this.
And what's happened to the city already with DNR?
Um, yeah, when they lose a paperwork seven times, that's, that's kind of frustrating. And, and Don Mahoney knows that, and he's not very happy, so. Um, so let's table this, and then I will get, I'll try to get Mary down here at our next, um, meeting.
It went back to once a month.
Do what, I'm sorry? Uh, yeah.
And remember, remember our next meeting, we moved to that Tuesday because we'll be closed for Columbus Day, so it's supposed to be October fourteenth.
Okay.
Supposed to be, or it's going to be?
I think, I, yeah, we talked about that. Yes, the thirteenth is a holiday. And we did, I, I have it down for the fourteenth at six o'clock. Fourteen at six o'clock. And I'll try to have Mary there, um, that way she can go over this and, and even on the, the plan itself with the projects that's coming up, she can answer that question. I believe so too.
On the fourteenth?
Yeah, Don, Don's gonna be here, um, and I'll have, Don Mahoney's gonna be here, and I'll have Don here too, Don.
Deckard.
Deckard.
Well, I like Don.
So. We'll try to.
We might call Don. Yeah, I'm talking to, I call him a side kid, but he called about it and he couldn't make it to this much meeting.
Yeah, they're in a special question, so. Um, make sure, I'll call him too, make sure. But he's got some, he wants to talk to everybody about some stuff that's gonna, that's been passed that's gonna affect municipalities. Not just us, it'll affect everybody, so.
We really wanna hear that.
No, I don't really wanna hear it, probably need to know. So. All right, so we'll table that thing. All right. Has anybody got anything else? What is, oh, that's anything else for Jessica or anybody else? A ditching bucket, did you?
It's on its way.
On its way, okay.
It did get ordered?
It's been ordered for five weeks.
Yeah.
It was six weeks, split time.
So, we'll clean up some ditches. All right. Anything else from you, Jessica, you got anything that's popped up? Okay. Um, I guess that will conclude the meeting, we will have a quick, quick cause I've been gone a long time today.
Yeah.
Quick, closed session. So I need a motion to.